All right, it is seven o'clock now. Are we good to go?
Mm-hmm.
All right. All right, so welcome, everyone. Just a quick reminder, make sure your cellphones are on airplane mode or turned off on silence so they don't disrupt the meeting. And this is the regular city council meeting for Minutrista, April 18th, 2022. And first, I'd like to ask that you join me in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first, I will start out with introductions. We have on, to my left way on the end, we have our Public Works Superintendent Gary Peters. Next to Gary, we have our Director of Administration, Ellie Palfus. And behind then, we have our City Clerk, Don Matzko. And then on this end, we have our City Engineer with WSB is Allison Fowsky. And then we have council members Kathleen Refkin and McGregor and John Chumperland and Pam Mortensen. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor. And then to my right, we have Jasper Krugel, our brand-new city administrator. And then we have our Finance Director, Brian Grimm. David Abel is our Community Development Director. And then we have Sarah Sansala with Kennedy and Graven, who is our attorney. And then on the end, we have our Chief of Police, Paul Falls. With that, we can move to approval of the agenda. Are there anything, is there anything else you need to add or any changes? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Thank you, Ms. Refkin, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Chumperland made that second, thank you. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So next on the agenda is special presentation. So first of all, I'd like to say welcome to our brand-new city administrator, Jasper Krugel. He's been here a week, so we'll try and be nice to him. This is his first meeting, and I'm sure there's many more meetings that he'll be here, hopefully. So Jasper comes to us, he was recently at City of Lasur as their administrator. He was their administrator for a little over, or nearly five years. Prior to that, he was promoted to that position from the Public Works Director. And before that, he was at Northfield as their Public Works Director. And while he was at Northfield, he then worked on his master's degree in city administration, municipal administration. So he has a lot of really good background. He has his undergraduate degree with the University of Minnesota in natural, in environmental and natural resources. Did I get all that right? Okay, good.
Pretty close.
I'm trying to memorize this. So we're really glad to have you on board. We've been without a person at the top there for a number of months, so it's good to have you on board. We're excited about the possibilities and what you bring with you for this position. Welcome.
Thank you very much, thank you.
You can say whatever you want.
Yeah, I am excited to be here. Everybody's been very accommodating, staff, city council. You know, my first recollection is everybody's doing a really nice job and there's good processes in place, so that's good to know, coming in. So yeah, looking forward to everything that Minutrista has going on and helping work through some of the challenges.
Thank you. All right, so next we have Susan Navartil with us. And she is the President of the Board of Directors for the Gillespie Center. Welcome, Susan, and thank you for coming back.
We know who to blame it on.
No, no, no. But thank you, I know we had you scheduled last time, and then I asked if you could come this time because Anne wasn't here, and I thought it would be important for her to be here, too.
It is, and that's part of my thank you for having me back again, because I've been on the board now with the Gillespie Center, this is the middle of my third year. And the whole times I've been on the board, every meeting we have, everybody I talk to, we talk about partners, and what always comes up are our city partners. And City of Minutrista is obviously a very important partner. What I also learned is that the Gillespie Center was successful at surviving the two years of COVID, they're over in my mind, thank you. We have to get back to normal. Because we had a reserve fund, and the City of Minutrista was a critical part of building that reserve fund for us, so it's an amazing partner, so that's appreciative. And also, Lisa was on, was representing on our board as the director. Our cities are welcome to send the director to be part of our board. And she helped me through a couple of interesting times with some good conversations. She may not remember all this, but I would call her and say, what do you think I need to do, because I'm being brand-new to it. So my connection with the city is, even though I don't live here, I live very close, but my connection with the city has always been very positive. And then whoever decided that Anne should join us, we had now added a very important piece to our board of knowledge of marketing. So we've been working on things like, we need to market the center. How many times has someone said to me, including Anne, when I first met her, what the heck is the Gillespie Center? So all of this input. And over these two and a half years, we've talked about partners. That's actually been my theme when I come up to visit, talk to people. And I realized that there was no formal presentation or thank you, other than in-person kind of thank yous, of the partnership that the Gillespie Center has needed to make us as successful as we are. So with the board's approval, we decided to start something called our Partner for Success Awards, and this year we presented them to the cities. So the City of Minutrista is one of the first groups, one of our first partners, to receive this award. So I'm here tonight to present the Partner Board, thank you for Partner for Success with the Gillespie Center, the City of Minutrista, and Lisa and Anne, if you would, as the two folks who, in my, Pam, you were at our annual meeting, thank you for coming to our annual meeting to represent.
It was a wonderful meeting.
But thank you.
Glad to be there.
So to, and I hope our relationship continues, I don't know why it shouldn't, but you know, it's one of those wishful that I want to say, and to present you to this. There we go. There, thank you. So we're just going to pay ownership at this event.
Thanks for presenting to us.
Yes, yes, so thank you for being a partner, and if anyone would ever like to stop in at a board meeting, we have open board meetings, if you have any questions about what's going on, or maybe something we do to help the City of Minutrista, please allow us now, because you are an important part of our success, so thank you.
Thank you, Susan, and the Gillespie Center, of course, is a wonderful amenity for all of our residents in this area, the larger community, Orinamound, Minutrista. We're glad to have been a partner, and we will continue so. And I know Anne has done a fabulous job representing our city and also making some very significant contributions to your organization, so.
Very definitely, she can't, she has to stay there.
Yeah, she will, she will.
So thank you.
Thank you. All right, so next we have our first-quarter financial update with Mr. Grimm.
Yes, so thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. And as you know, each year, the first quarter usually, not too much has happened in the new year, our property taxes, first half don't come until that June-July timeframe. So basically, our revenues are lower, just as in other years, as far as basically our collections, we're at that 5%, 6% range. Last year was about 7%, so until we get those, our main property tax revenue, that's pretty normal. As far as our building permits, maybe another item to talk about, we're at about 21% of our annual budgeted amount, which I think for basically that first quarter, we know things usually pick up in spring, summer, and I don't, I think we, you can see, we have a, Woodland Cove 8th on the addition, or on the agenda later, so I think the building market seems like it's going to stay strong here. I don't, I guess there's some other factors that could play in, but seems to be trending that way. As far as the expenditures, we're at about 27% year-to-date, but that's about where we should be, we're usually in that, you know, mid-20 range, based on some things we've paid through the second quarter, half-year, some things we've paid all year, like our annual insurance. So I think we're trending good there. The one item I did note, and I think the mayor just talked about, is our administration department's a little lower, because we did not have an administrator for the first three months of the year, makes sense, you know, as far as having a little savings, but it's, yeah, I'd still say it's better to have an administrator than just the financial savings, and that's coming from a financial guy, I guess. So otherwise, yeah, lastly, I guess the current cash and investments, we're sitting at about that $9,975,000. The one item I did want to mention is we do have that ARPA dollars still, just until we make the final official transfers, that is sitting in a special revenue fund, Fund 409, at that $444,000 roughly. We'll get our second amount in June-July here, I think, this summer, so to get our full allocation for what the state, through the federal government, has allocated to the City of Minutrista. So other than that, I guess I'll stand for any questions on the documents that were in the packet, pretty normal times. And then the audit report for our 2021, you know, basically year-end final audit numbers should be coming to the May 16th council meeting.
Okay. Questions? I just have a comment, and maybe we can, maybe at our next work session, whatever, we will, I think we should take the ARPA dollars and decide what funds to put them in, because we've already discussed about water fond and broadband and so on. I'd rather have them be in those funds, so that they can't take the money back.
Yeah, and that's one of the things we talked about for the reporting purpose, you know, we know we'll spend them on appropriate projects, and we took that exemption to sort of alleviate some of the reporting and some of the onerous, potentially onerous, you know, type of requirements, but we still do need to officially, then the council will get to decide, obviously, make those transfers and allocations on how we want to, you know, broadband, water, et cetera.
Okay, so maybe that would be a good discussion, maybe at our next work session? All right, so that we can formally then transfer those funds, because I'd rather see the, I'd rather see the fund balances more in the various, yeah, like water or roads, we thought about doing some, putting some money into the roads, or CAF, whatever we are, we're going to end up doing it with. Okay, that's all I had. Any other questions? All right, with that, then we'll move on to our next item, and that is persons to be heard. I believe we have one gentleman signed up, Mr. Steve Decolius. You're a regular.
Thank you very much, my name is Steve Decolius, 1154-15 Yellowstone Trail, Minutrista. First of all, welcome. Jasper, we're looking forward to working with you. I just have a question tonight, so this is, but based on some of the things that people have said in previous meetings about lawn irrigation, I looked into, instead of odd-even, if I just water twice a week, then I'd be eight times a month, as opposed to 15. So I don't, I'll be in violation of the odd-even, that'd be me, odd-even requirement every week. So I just wanted to ask how, you guys ponder, how are we going to deal with that? Because I would end up watering a lot less.
Right, no, and actually, we have an information flyer going out the end of April, and it's specifically talking about water, lawn irrigation, and I do think that's another item that we have on our agenda for watering, for irrigation, coming up, so we'll be talking about that, how we want to handle that. So thank you for those comments. And you're right, twice a week is sufficient.
Yeah, that's based on what we've learned.
Yep. Okay, so we'll move on to our next item, we have our consent agenda items, are there any you wish to remove? All right, I know we reworded that, so thank you for that, Ms. Refkin. With that, we have approved our consent agenda items, A, approve our work session meeting minutes from April 4th, 2022; B is approve our city council regular meeting minutes from April 4th, 2022; C is a resolution to approve claims; D is an ordinance number 475, approve our Code Text Amendment for Chapter 5, Section 500.03, Section 500.23, subdivision 7, and Section 500.31, subdivision 4 and subdivision 5; and I, and D1 would be a resolution to approve ordinance number 475 by title and summary. Consent agenda item E is a resolution to approve a two-year extension to preliminary plat in dock variants for Highlands on Whale Tail Lake; F is a resolution to adopt the supporting housing and local decision-making authority, we talked about that last time; and G is approve our final plat of Woodland Cove 8th Edition; H is a resolution authorizing execution of a development agreement by and between the City of Minutrista and MI Homes LLC for Woodland Cove 8th Edition. That's a lot. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion then to approve consent agenda items A through H?
Some.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Mortensen. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So we'll move on to our business items. Our first business item is a discussion of our overlay pavement coring discussion. I believe that'll go to Ms. Fowsky.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Council may recall that back in February, council authorized pavement forensics, which is pavement corings, in various streets throughout the city to determine the condition of the pavement. And I thought that this time through, it would be helpful for the council, perhaps, to see what pavement corings look like. And so if I may, my little show and tell now, be careful with this one, this one is from Trillium. The top here was a seal coat, and this is delaminated, so it's not part of, this was part of the pavement core. And you'll notice when you pass this around, and we can pass it down if the council wants to see it, when you touch it, little particles come off on your finger, that's ravelling. That means that the bituminous is coming off the aggregate surface there, and that's an oxidation process of the pavement. So that's, we don't like to see that, but in this case, you know, if you have a, if you have a strong pavement section underneath, and it's only part of the core that's delaminating, pardon me, not delaminating, ravelling, if you can mill all that off, then that's a good thing. But if it's ravelling all the way through, that would be ideally a full-depth reclamation or full pavement removal and repaving. So if you were to overlay on top of that, you would get cracks reflecting through. So the reason I wanted to do that is, we had talked about doing Painters, the Painters Road area. So this is a coring from, I believe this is Painters Road. Yeah, Painters Road. So this is all that there is for bituminous. So it's a very thin section of bituminous, it is ravelling, not as much as that one, but it's a thin pavement. And so when we look at this as a candidate, one, because it's ravelling, if you were to overlay that, the cracks would reflect through. Two, if you wanted, if you tried to mill off any of that surface, you wouldn't leave enough pavement structure there to be, to make, keep that road strong enough for that construction traffic. So we were presented with a bit of a challenge where those roads that we were looking as mill and overlay candidates, a mill and overlay is not the ideal solution for this. You could certainly, like I said, you could still look at an overlay for part of these, for part of the roads that are a little bit thicker, but we would see that reflective cracking coming back through, and we'd get, you know, 10 years or so of pavement life extended through there. So what we are, one of the other options that included in your packet, this one's much bulkier, and this one is Kramer Road. So you can see it's a much thicker section, you can see that there is a little bit of ravelling down in the surface, but not as much as we see in the other pavement cores. So I wanted, again, I wanted to bring this to council, because I think it's, when we talk about the different pavement distresses, it's kind of hard, I'm a visual learner, so I thought it might be helpful for the council to kind of see and feel what the different pavement distresses look like, so.
This is how close to normal?
The top one's looking pretty good, you can feel the difference between the top core on the side and the bottom one, the bottom is starting to ravel, because it's an older section, but you are seeing, I mean, that's a, that's a pretty hefty section of bituminous through there. So all the corings have been completed, I just brought you a little sampling of what we see, and just to explain what the different distresses are that we see in the corings. So as I mentioned, when we were looking at an overlay project for this year, we were looking at Painters Road, Painters Creek Drive, and Painters Circle. We're not seeing good pavement thickness in Painters Road, a little bit thicker as we move through Painters Creek Drive and Painters Circle, but still, we see that ravelling. So what we wanted to do, we wanted to bring that to council's attention, to look at what our options are for overlays for this year. As I mentioned, we could look at this overlay, but the challenges with that, with the thinner pavement section, so we could, what are our options? Do we want to look at just doing an overlay on there, knowing that will reflect through? We could hold off and look at a reclamation project in the future. The challenge with that is, there's only like 26 parcels along that whole section, so for a 429 project, you know, we'd certainly be looking at some high-assessment amounts for those roadways. And then another option is we could look at Texas Underseal Technology, which can help keep those reflective cracks from coming through, but they will still come up there, just because of the nature of the coring through there. So if we wanted to, if the council wants to look at other options, seeing the condition of Painters Road on page 100 of the packet, there are some alternative roads that the council may want to consider for an overlay. One of them is Sunny Brook Lane and Sunny Brook Drive. Superintendent Peters indicated that there is a drainage issue that's been brought to attention over on Sunny Brook Lane, I believe, correct?
Correct.
So we know that there's a drainage issue through there, however, we don't have coring through there. It is a newer road, but we do like to have the corings, just to verify that the pavement management plan or project that we have recommended is appropriate. The other option is to look at Game Farm Road East, we've talked about that quite a bit, again, we don't have any corings to confirm, that overlays would be a good option through there, but we can certainly look at what, if council wants to look at that, we would certainly recommend getting a coring out through there. The third option is to look at Painters Creek Preserve, in that last core, the tall core, that's from, we have cored that area, that we could get an overlay through there for about $270,000. This area, we haven't talked about in a capital improvement planning, so we would be putting this project ahead of other projects we've spoken about, but again, as I mentioned, this is, that area would be relatively straightforward, because it's urbanized, we already have the coring, so we would be able to, we would be able to go through and get a plan set out for bidding in short time. But with that, I would open up to council for any questions that they might have, I know this is a lot of information, but we wanted to make sure that the council understood what we're seeing with the cores and what some options are if we want to take Painters off the table this year for an overlay.
How much do we have in the fund for this, for the overlays?
That's basically the 426 is what we are working with, 426,000 is what we have allocated to overlays this year.
Okay, and, okay.
I think we could probably push up to about 500,000, but I think the project had, you know, fallen in.
Yeah, I think we had a little bit more, but not a significant.
Yeah, that's where the game farm piece dropped off, I mean, the coring stuff, because that was going to be another few hundred thousand, right, or give or take.
And do we have any idea whether or not we're going to have costs that are higher, like they were last year?
So for bituminous costs, we're not seeing that, we're seeing other construction costs go up, but not oil as much as, fortunately, as we had.
Last year, okay. So the odds of having that money to actually finish the projects is pretty good?
Correct. And there's always the option that if pricing comes in much too high, that you can reject the bids, too.
Well, even with our recent Jennings project, we had, we came in good with those bids, and that was, what, in February?
Yes, yeah, and I'm trying to recall what oil prices were doing at that time. I can't remember what the price per barrel was, but we're, I mean, we're still seeing...
It's gone down just slightly, but, yeah. So Allison, just tell me, so the, so I'm kind of, you're saying one thing and then also another thing, so I'm trying to get my head wrapped around this. So you're saying it's not a good idea to do the mill and overlay for the Painter Road, Painter Creek area, unless we do the Texas Seal Coat first, and then, if you do, and that's an extra 30, but then will it give you that 10 to 12 years? I don't know.
So, thank you, so to clarify, the ideal project for Painters Road would be a reclamation project.
Okay.
However, we have discussed with some, with some roadways within Minutrista, an option to do an overlay, just to buy some additional time. The challenge with Painters Road is, one, we have that section that's only two, you know, only a couple inches, so there's not a lot of pavement to work with there. And two, we would, if you do look at an overlay through there, we would recommend that Texas Underseal, because it delays that reflective cracking, but it doesn't eliminate.
Right, right. My only other comment is, we've talked about this before, and I've mentioned that I'm concerned about a number of roads that will be in the same situation, where when you do a reclamation project and you only have a few, you only have a handful of properties, North Arm is another one, we've talked about, and when those assessments get to be so enormous, it's going to be impossible to do that. So we need to look at our assessment policy, number one. But the other thing is, I would be reluctant to say, well, let's do Painter Road as a reclamation project next year, only because first we say, we're going to do this, that's not going to cost you anything, and now we say, oh, but next year, forget that, now next year, we're going to assess you a rather significant amount. So I have no problem with whatever the council wants to do, but I think we need to address our assessment policy before we determine which more rural roads we're going to do, where there's fewer properties on them, because that 50% assessment gets pretty significant. In this case, if you just do the numbers, it's going to be over $14,000, $14,222, I believe, and that, that's just not, I think you're going to have a lot of pushback.
So what are you suggesting for the assessment policy?
Well, maybe that's something we should put on a work session, bring it back to take a look. We can look at percentages, but that's not necessarily going to get us there, but again, we can look at options, so.
Aren't there, oh, go ahead, Anne, I'm sorry. Aren't there, when we did the Ox Yoke Circle and those others?
Right.
We didn't just do one road, we did roads kind of throughout. Can we look at other roads that we could do with Painter Road and all that, to make it bigger, more resonant, so that the assessment level would go down?
Well, the one next, close to it is North Arm, but that's so expensive, and that's in the same situation, I don't know how many people are in, on North Arm that would get assessed, like 20, maybe?
I counted them, it was more like 30 when I counted list.
Yeah, but we're probably talking millions for that one, you know, so, again, those assessments might be 18,000? So, sorry, this is a council discussion.
I live in Lakeville, I have, it's like 12,000, so it allows to pay over 200,000.
All the assessments are, but still, we have to look at the benefit, and Sarah, you can, so we can't assess more than what the benefit is, and I've talked to staff about this in the past, when you get into these, the highest amount that we've ever assessed is 14,000, and that was on Halsted. And that was, and that was going from gravel to bituminous, so that is a little different, but when you have like North Arm or Painter, where you have bituminous and you're going to new bituminous, it's a harder sell to go that 14, 15 on up assessment, and you're going to get people to push back, but Sarah, can you speak to that a little bit?
Sure, Madam Mayor, members of the council, when assessing a property, you have to prove special benefit to the property, so the property has to increase in value, basically, by the amount that you're assessing. So usually, that's not the, property does not increase in value by the full assessment amount, so that's kind of the balance you need to strike with your assessment, is that, you know, that you're only assessing what the value is, that the property will go up. Otherwise, I think you could face an assessment appeal, a property owner can file an appeal with the court and challenge that assessment with the court, and the court could end up revising that assessment, so, but that's something to keep in mind, I mean, there is a way to, you can have an appraisal done prior to doing your assessments, but then, you know, if that comes back really low, then you're kind of stuck with that amount. So, you know, some cities like to do that. So, some, you know, some cities like to do that ahead of time and have appraisals done and determine the assessments by that amount, and then others kind of take the risk of trying to figure out what the special benefit would be and assessing that amount and basically hoping that there are no assessment appeals.
But it's a case-by-case basis based on the road, so I mean, it's not an overall change. I mean, we'll do it as we come to the road.
No, it's, you can make it part of your policy, assessment policy, right.
How, so you would just change the whole policy?
Mm-mm, no, you could look at it, and for instance, if, if fifty percent is going to be too high, then the policy could say X number of dollars or whatever.
Right, but we've already done that.
No.
Well, we decreased what the school paid.
Yeah, I'd agree, we, we've done on a case-by-case basis, we've started at the fifty percent as a baseline, and then there's certain ones that we've had to come down to thirty percent or thirty-three percent based on, knowing that the benefit, a twenty thousand dollar assessment was going to be too much benefits, and then we've had to come down to thirteen or fourteen or whatever, so. So we've sort of de facto done it, it was just whether we'd want to, I don't know, define it more in policy, I guess, as far as.
Yeah.
Well, I think if you change the overall policy now, you're going to have people this year that'll be mad that it's now changed for next year's projects or whatever. Isn't it better to leave the policy as it, as it is and then do a case-by-case basis based on the road and the value to the number of homes on the road?
Well, it, it is and it isn't. Um, so I'm not suggesting to change the policy necessarily. I think, so the, the argument has been, well, what, what do you, if we have a fifty percent policy, and we've been implementing that. So the argument has been, well, now if you change it and you go to forty percent or thirty, or whatever that might be, how do you justify that to the other people that have paid fifty percent? So that's why I'm saying, if we look at our policy and not changing the fifty percent, but say in certain circumstances, if it goes over the benefit, now again, the benefit.
The benefit's a case-by-case basis though, so you can't, you can't have an overall policy exemption when each road is different.
Well, you could, but, you know, it could say, it could say, if, if you go over the benefited amount, then we're going to take a look at it.
Right, but the benefited amount is based on the homes on that road, the number of them. So, I mean, the benefit to a home on hardscrabble is not the same as the benefit to a road in Woodley Cove. I mean, like, it's all based on that specific street. That's all I'm saying, I just don't know what we would cover in a work session on this unless we're specifically talking about one specific road and specific homes that are being assessed it, because every year, the benefit changes based on the roads we're doing.
Okay, I mean, it's up to council, if you think we're good on our policy and we don't have to make any additions or changes, that's fine.
Does the year have any suggestions?
It, it's a delicate dance, right? Uh, because Minutrista has a couple different kinds of land uses, low-density residential, you know, normal, you know, residential development, so you're always going to run into a, a battle of, you know, five houses on a one-mile stretch versus, you know, thirty houses on a block. So finding that balance, what, the policy could be reviewed, looked at. You could look at maybe just adding some language to say, you're going to look at it on a case-by-case basis. So then that's actually formalized, and it's not just kind of a, um, we're going to look at it for this property, but not this property. Because I think you have a good point, like, if you have one road on one, one property on a road, that's, let's say, you know, half a mile long, and it's a half a million-dollar project, you know, the assessment policy would dictate you have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar assessment, which likely won't meet the, the threshold of that being the actual benefit. So, um, I think you, in practice, from what I understand, you've been doing it, um, maybe just formalizing it, because as construction costs get higher, which we're seeing, you're going to see larger assessments that people haven't seen or aren't accustomed to. So people are going to have a little bit more shell shock, and you're getting a little, little pushback. But knowing that if you change your assessment policy, um, that just kind of shifts the cost burden from the localized resident to the general population of the city. So, knowing that you're doing that, it's, you know, it's a, you, you don't really win, right? Um, somebody's got to come up with the money, uh, but, you know, it's just, you know, a policy of who do you think benefits the most and, and falling within the restraints of the, the law. So, I think really, the only, maybe we could look at it at a, at a work session, but really just kind of evaluating it, um, you know, the equity of it from year to year would be challenging, as you guys have talked about. But just maybe looking at it as these prices increase, that you acknowledge that you're going to look at it on a case-by-case basis would be, would be good.
But, for tonight, we, we really want to just figure out what we want to do this year and or, and actually, maybe just this year versus next year, because we can maybe figure that out in the next several months. So the question is, do we want to do something this year? But my, my only question is, how come we picked the Kramer Road in that area? I know you said we have corings, but don't, isn't Turtle, there's some areas in Turtle Creek that are, were on the schedule?
Yeah, that's a great, great question, Mayor. Um, when we look at Turtle, the Turtle Creek area, that's a much larger project area. And I think we're also looking at some drainage improvements through Turtle Creek, whereas in the Kramer, the Painter's Park, Painter's Creek Preserve, um, we weren't identifying those needs in that area, in that neighborhood. So, so it's, it's a lot less, um, we wouldn't be looking at getting survey work um, or any kind of storm sewer improvements, which takes longer time in, in plan preparation, that the Painter's Creek Preserve would offer an opportunity to just go and put a very simple plan set together for bidding.
And part of Turtle Creek also is going to be probably full-depth removal in some of the areas. That, on the main drag is for sure, uh, the island area will be a full-depth removal and repave. So it's going to add a little more cost here and there, so.
I just don't want to just grab something out of the sky and, you know, I, it'd be better if we have a plan, but, okay.
No, no, it's not, okay, we, we had a plan, and now we're upending the plan because of additional information.
Right.
Right?
Right.
So we need to go back and relook at the plan. And then pick, pick new projects and new roads, that's what we have to do.
Right.
So, whatever time that takes or whatever we have to do, because we're not going to do it tonight.
Well, my que, so, that's a good point. My question is, are we getting too far into the season for projects for mill and overlays for this year? And I don't want to rush into something and then maybe figure out later, oh, we should have done this, or we should have done that. So if it's not imperative and we're getting too far into the season, maybe we take a pause and, and then figure out what we're going to do next year.
Yeah, um, I can speak to that, and if Superintendent Peters has any, any other comments, I'd welcome those too. My take on it is, if going further into the season, I'm comfortable with, if it's a very straightforward overlay project, where we're not looking at significant curb removals, um, we're not looking at utility improvements or drainage improvements. And so, as I said before, that's why we, we're looking at, we didn't look to the Turtle Creek neighborhood, um, for this year. Um, if we are looking at incorporating some of those drainage improvements, then I, I think we are, if it's a larger area, we are starting to get a little pinched on time because we're going to need to get some, some data, um, in order to prepare a plan set that's worthwhile and, and addressing the needs of the, the drainage needs that are out there.
Are you able to bring us back in the very next meeting? Your recommendations as to what should be done this year that fits into both the budget and the timing and the degree of.
We can certainly take another look, but our challenge right now is that we have, um, we would, we're a little restricted with what we have for the coring data. And so we would be based on, based on what we have for coring data, if that's what the council wants us to look at.
Well, let me, let me ask you this. If we didn't do Kramer in, in that area this year, would it be feasible to do it next year? Or it, would the, uh, roads deteriorate even, even further to the point where they couldn't do them, couldn't be a mill and overlay project?
I don't see that happening based on what I saw in the cores, if it's a mill and over, we usually look at coring data being, being good data to hold for two to three years, so.
Well, but if we're just going to do it next year, why wouldn't we do it this year? We know what the cost is. I mean, I think the question that comes down to tonight is whether or not Painter is worth doing a mill and overlay with a Texas undercoat, or if we're just going to put it on the, it needs a full reclamation project. We need to decide that and know which bucket that, that road's going into.
Yes, good point.
Agreed, agreed.
We need to decide what, what bucket that road goes in. Gary, what are your thoughts on that road?
Well, looking at the data, I mean, the other thing to consider too is also the subbase was very subpar on Painter's. Um, when you're looking at the full-depth reclamation, you want to have, you know, adequate material to mix together and all that. And when we do that, we're not going to get that, I don't think, with Painter's, so, um, you know, or we need to do that with Painter's, I should say, we're not going to get that with a mill and overlay, you're not going to have that added strength, um, in it. So I mean, to me, it just would make sense to put that as a reclamation. Unfortunately, you know, it's one of those rural areas that, you know, it, you know, was not done again, but, um, the reason that we brought up some of the other roads were, they were in our plan, I mean, we had, you know, stuff listed out, I mean, uh, some of the stuff that we presented in the past, and we've had different neighborhoods in there and stuff, so, um, they are in need. Um, I don't know, I would almost venture to say that I would put the, without coring data to look at it, but, um, the Sunny Brook area, because we have already, through Public Works, has already replaced all the bad curbing in there. We went through, did all the catch basin repairs in there already, um, in preparation for a seal coat. Um, and that's what we're seeing is the seal coat's actually delaminating. Um, but we should really look at some corings in there, that one doesn't, has the minimal amount of work that needs to be done. You know, where if you go into, uh, Painter's Creek area, um, two hundred and fifty feet of the first, uh, of Kramer was already done a few years ago with a drainage prod, uh, project that was a nightmare in there. Um, but you're also be looking at curb work in there, you'd be looking at catch basin work. You know, and if you're going to do it, then we'd have to look at some I and I work in there for the, um, catch, or for the manholes. So it is a lot more, um, I don't know if it's worth it this time to try and bid something like that out or not. You know, I don't know. To me, the later in the season you get, the, the more people are, the more the companies are filled up and they're looking to, hey, if we can fill this one up, we'll make a little bit of money, more money here. That's why I say I like to get it out early and stuff. Maybe we just, you know, come back with a few things that are, are simple overlays to kind of, you know, do that push again like we did in the past, to get some other roads done, I don't know, we're running out of those roads, because most of these roads now are turning into reclamations, you know, and stuff, so.
Right.
You know, I mean, our, our, our big tragedy is these roads are pushing twenty years old and they're all in need. So maybe we wait and do a bigger project next year as one, where you say we can get more roads in a certain area together. Um, you don't want to jump around too much because mobilization will kill you. Um, you know, I mean, if, if they're moving from one part of the city to the other, it's a lot more expensive if they're just moving a couple blocks down, so. I personally don't think we should look at Game Farm yet, because I think overall, Game Farm needs to be looked at as a whole. Um, it is pushing at ten, twelve-year, thirteen-year mark since it's been done. It is in need of a mill and overlay, um, if you remember how that works with the, with the pavement management program, where you, you have your graph and you get to a certain point where it deteriorated, you want to bump it back up, it's at that point. Maybe then we look at the coring in the middle, we do the Texas under seal in that area, but we go from all the way, and I know it's a lot of money, but we go from one ten up to twenty-six and do the whole thing. I mean, do it as one big project, it's something to look at that's out there. Um, you know, unfortunately, it's one of those roads that's going to have to be looked at in the near future here to be redone. We also have neighborhoods, so I don't know, there's so much out there, it's, you know, it, it's, it's a lot of money to be looked at out there.
I know.
Okay, well, we talked about this before, we, we need to wrap our arms around what absolutely has to be done, like in the next two years, and actually do some kind of a major project on the reclamation side. But as far as tonight, would you like your mill and overlay?
If, if we want to do a mill and overlay project this year, this would be the time to direct staff to do something, because time is getting short, that's, that's the thing. But I also think, with that said, regardless of what we do tonight, we need to have a three-year plan.
Yeah, we do.
You know, it has to be, this is what we're going to be doing, um, here's a reclamation project for twenty-two, or twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, and not only so that we know and we're not behind the eight ball, but also so that residents on those roads will know. And then they can be prepared for assessments too, so.
Yeah, we were, and we have been looking at that three-year plan, and we were gathering these cores to, to confirm what we were looking at with some of these assumptions. And unfortunately, the, it was the overlay assumption of Painter's that, that, uh, didn't pan out with the cores that we received, so. Um, you, you know, if we're looking at, at what options, you know, I know Superintendent Peters likes, likes to look at the Sunny Brook area. Um, you know, we can certainly take a look at that, but again, we don't have a core for there. So we, you know, those streets are running, I believe, twenty years old, if I'm correct. Um, so we'd want to verify that, that would be an appropriate measure, um.
They're, they're more than twenty.
Oh, I, when were they put in, do you remember nineties, that Sunny Brook went in?
Yeah, it was late nineties.
Sounds right.
Yeah.
So they're pushing over twenty. Um, you know, if I may, um, Jasper and I had a great conversation today talking CIP and stuff. I don't know if you want to talk about what you guys have, that you guys had there that I think would be a great to implement here. Um, but I, I would really want you to chime in on that.
Yeah, no, definitely, um, and I've talked to Allison about this too, and we had a little conversation, uh, today on the phone as well. You know, just trying to get our thoughts organized using the data, um, from our PCR, our I pavement condition index, and then looking at Gary and Allison, really looking at that data, grouping projects together that we think need to get done as far as the timeline goes, working with Brian to see what's feas, financially feasible, right? Because what's going to come back is, hey, we need to spend, you know, twelve million dollars on roads in the next five years. That's not feasible, right? So prioritizing those and then kind of having a queue, so if something comes up like Painter's, but, uh, ideally, you're doing these corings well in advance, have a three-year window that you can say, oh, we kind of know what's going on. So there aren't any surprises, um, and then, but, but still, there might be a surprise at some point in time. But then having some in queue and prioritize, so you're not really having the conversation about, well, which one should we do? You know, you can go and say, well, we have a four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar project, uh, that didn't really work. What's our closest project that we can just swap in, um, quickly? And just being pretty, pretty, uh, the ability to pivot on these projects quickly if we need to. Um, but if it's all kind of set up and it takes time to do that, you know, you really shouldn't have to pivot much. You should kind of know, you should have the data. There's a little bit of front-end work with, with gathering the data, but developing that. So we're, we're starting that process, um, I have in my notes for future work session meetings to talk about a ten-year street maintenance plan, which is separate than a street CIP. So, essentially, every street in town will have a plan. So, you can, you know, I'm used to selecting an interactive map, street section, saying, you know, what's been done so far? Uh, what's the plan, uh, and then you kind of know. And then, it's a really helpful tool for residents to know what to expect, you know, when, when, when is my road? Because that seems like a question that we get quite a bit, when's my road going to get done?
Right.
Um, you know, and you can, you can have this be, you know, either on map form, PDF, or, you know, some sort of interactive map, that, um, solution that we could come up with too. So, I think the, we're, we're starting that process, um, and I think you'll see some things happen in the next couple of months to, to be able to see this. But really, I think the, the timeline really in my mind is to get this ready in, in front of you to make some decisions related to the twenty-twenty-three budget. So, you can incorporate and make sure what you're allocating in that budget matches with the projects and, you know, because, um, uh, we had, uh, in my previous city, you know, it said we were supposed to be spending something like one point eight million dollars a year on road maintenance. Well, that's, you know, that's not feasible, right? So you have to pick and choose and kind of come up with a plan, uh, and, and, and be thoughtful about that process, so. We're working on it, there's, there will be more to come, for sure.
So for tonight? So Gary, what are you saying, that we should do the, the Sunny Brook?
I think Sunny Brook, but I would suggest that we try to get coring as, done as quick as possible out there. I mean, if they could get out there this week, next week, to look, um, we may find similar where you're getting ravelling, it might not be feasible to do it at this point. Uh, looking at what I see in on the pavement distresses on top, um, the delamination that we're getting of the seal coat under there tells me we may end up with what we're having in, um, a trillium, so, to look at. I mean, so, I mean, we should really get, you know, corings done, so, you know, we've got other neighborhoods, yes, to do, but, you know, I, like you say, I would love to get it done, but like I say, I hate to do it on a road that doesn't need it, that's why I say, I don't know how fast corings can get done. I mean, they're fairly cheap, but they will tell a lot of story behind it and see if it's feasible.
I'd have to ask where the coring schedule is, but, you know, I can circle back with, I don't know if you want this as a, if it's appropriate to do, uh, communication between meetings as far as, um, the turnaround for corings, I, I just, I don't know the coring schedule off the top of my head.
So.
Also, at Sunny Brook, didn't you say that there was drainage issue?
Also, Sunny Brook, didn't you say that there was drainage issues? On that north side?
On Sunny Brook Circle there is, but the lane, Sunny Brook Lane and Sunny Brook Drive are prep ready to go. It would be the, uh, the main drain coming from one ten up to the cul-de-sac area that we did not touch, because there is a ma- a big drainage, uh, issue there. Um, with a lot of moisture coming out of the hill into the road, so I don't even know if I would incorporate that at this point, uh, being that it is a. It is a major factor, we've looked at this in the past, um, the issue with it being is there's a lot of utilities where the drain tile should go. Including fiber optic, which, uh, makes it a very difficult dig. Um, so, I mean, that would have to be researched, that part of it would have to be researched, but, uh. The other two roads are set to go, so I mean, you could do it, you know, piece, you know, piece by piece. Um, it's done all over in the cities, you know, other cities have done that, where they jump, you know, and do certain roads in an area and leave the other one for the following year. Cause we kinda talked about doing that, if we're gonna do a big bonding project, you know, for maybe the neighborhood across the street, where you're doing the. Uh, water sewer and that type of stuff over in the. Morning View, Eastview area, you've got a crew right there that would be able to come in and do that and fix, you know, the issues, there's two catch basins. Or three catch basins that had to be rebuilt, uh, due to ship, due to, uh, frost shifting. Um, and then there's, you know, some curb panels that would have to be done, but you can incorporate that all into another, a different project.
Sense then to do the Sunnyfield with Morning View, they're right, they're right there in the same neighborhood.
To do what, I'm sorry?
So, we've been talking about Morning View, potentially, if not in twenty-three, po- potentially in twenty-four. So wouldn't it make more sense to do Sunny Brook with the Morning View project?
Yeah, I'm saying you could do the one area and you do the, if you wanted to do a project, this year you could do the other area, I mean, it'd be great to incorporate it all, but I mean, like you say. You, you have to look at, what do you wanna put out for a Capitol Hall to begin, you know? You know, so I mean, that, you're talking quite a bit of money just in the, you know, with the water main replacement and road curb gutter. You know, covering that whole Eastview, from Eastview to, um, Westwood, I mean, that's a lot of area.
We talked about doing an overlay on, um, Morning View Circle, the one right across from, um, Game Farm, or Sunnyfield.
Morning View Terrace? That was done last year.
That was done.
With the project.
Um, I was expecting direction on either taking a look at Painters Creek Preserve, um, would be option one. Or Sunny Brook Lane to get corings and proceed with that one.
So what, what Gary's saying is where you wanna go?
That would be one of the options, yes.
What's an estimate of what Sunny Brook Lane and Sunny Brook Drive would cost, they're pretty similar to the other ones presented here, just from, out of curiosity?
We don't have an estimate?
They're, they're fairly similar in scope though, yes, I would expect them to be similar in, in, uh, cost to the Painters Creek Preserve. Particularly if we've already gone through and had the, um, the curb work done.
So potentially for future years, it might not be a bad idea to core a couple, few different areas versus just one, sort of, I guess what I'm.
We did, I mean, we cored quite a, quite a few areas, we did the Painters Road, we did game, um. Game Farm. And Evans, this, this, so we did four different areas, and, and the challenge is, is that, if you recall, like. Well, we wanna get coring data, but the coring data is good for a few years, so you don't wanna go too far out.
Right.
Because then the coring data is no longer useful, and so it, it's a balancing act of how much, how much data do you want right now, how much. Um, are you going to use, how much of that data is going to be utilized in the near future, in the next few years?
Okay, okay, but, but, I don't wanna run into this problem again.
Agreed.
I really do. So, we have, whatever balance there is, we have to know going forward that we are, we do enough. So that you don't have to keep coming back to us with new information to make us change our minds.
I, I think what we might look to do is, is, and I can work with, um, with Superintendent Peters. On this is to identify what, what roads do we think are good candidates for overlays? And start coring some more overlay streets, because that's, that's the hinge point, is we're, we're assuming they can be overlays, the coring's coming back, so you know they're not. And so we would like to identify those areas and then get that data to back it up, so, okay.
Okay, so, for tonight, what direction do you wanna give staff? That they come back with corings for Sunny Brook?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, so the question is, do we have an estimate on the Sunny Brook Lane and Sunny Brook Drive? Is there, is that gonna be around two seventy, or do we know? Any idea, I'm just wondering if.
I don't have that up, up top of my, I don't have that open.
Cause if we have, see, Painters Creek Preserve and Sunny Brook Lane, they're, they're fairly close, and if we have enough, maybe we wanna do both.
Okay, well, what I'd like to do is, I'd like, if I have direction on getting coring data for Sunny Brook. And then I'm also hearing that, um, to look at what would the estimated cost for an overlay of Sunny Brook? Uh, what would Sunny Brook Lane and Sunny Brook Drive be for an overlay? And then is there an option to include Painters Creek Preserve?
Okay, and so I would say, in order to get those corings done quickly, um, I would say we come back with that amount, uh. If we could give our administrator authorization to, to approve that, can we go that route? So we don't have to wait two more weeks to approve the corings, and then wait two more weeks to get the corings, and then wait two more weeks? To, or three more weeks or four more weeks to get the plans?
I think we can accomplish that, I, I'm not finding the, the coring costs from this last go-round at my fingertips, but.
It wasn't very much, I'm gonna say about five thousand?
I think five thousand is correct, and, and if we're only looking at the one street, I would, this would be.
Okay, so I would. Yeah, we could authorize the corings tonight, and I'm assuming they're gonna, it's gonna be between two and five thousand. So, and, and if it's a hair over that, then, you know, Jasper could make that decision, I mean. Um, all right, so is there a motion then to authorize corings for Sunny Brook Lane and Sunny Brook Drive? Thank you, Ms. Refkin, is there a second? Thank you, Ms. McGregor, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes five oh, and if we can get those coring results back in two weeks, that would be great.
I will do my best.
All right, um, all right, in fact, is it two weeks, or is it, do we have an extra money, no, we don't, okay, all right?
So Jasper, when do you think you're gonna get this project started, so that, and Anne, you said. This shouldn't, this should not be happening right now.
Yeah.
This whole conversation should not. I'm very frustrated, actually, that we're even going, having to go through this. When are you gonna be able to get that project done, so that we can start planning, I mean, we should be planning next year right now, not looking at what we're doing this year yet.
Yeah, um, I, it started already, so we've, we've started the conversations, Allison and, you know, she's got ideas. Gary has ideas too, so, we're gonna put them all together, it'll be on a work session probably in May or early June. Uh, but, really, it's, it's important that it's paired with the budget process, so, you'll see it June before September, you know, to make some decisions. But, it's really, I think, I think the data, from what I've gathered so far, the data's there, we have pavement condition indexes. Um, Gary's got a great working knowledge, Allison's got a great working knowledge of the actual road conditions, right, cause that's a piece, and then. Pairing all that together and coming up with phases, I mean, that's what it comes down to, so, um, definitely, it's, it's, it's happening right now, uh, I can assure you that. Uh, and it, and you'll see something here probably in the next month to six weeks, uh, that you'll be able to look at some draft things, cause. I, the, it, it's something that, uh, cities do, they've done, it's not like we're reinventing the wheel, it's, it's something that, uh, there's a process for, and, and. We, the, the big thing is having the data to, to drive the, the, the mapping, so, and we have that data, from what I understand.
And, if you recall, we did talk about doing a pause on reclamation and or reconstruct projects, and doing overlays next year. To kinda take a pause and be able to put together all this information, so I think that, um, getting that information. With the idea that we're gonna do overlays next year, maybe we can do, but we were thinking. Um, in order to do re- reclamation and or reconstruct projects, we have to, we needed to start that this month. To get everything lined up, so that it can go out for bid in January, so if we're still gonna stick with that overlay for next year. Pausing on reclamation, then, um, we're, we're good, we're on a good track right now, timewise. You, you're giving me a blank look, okay?
No, I, I'm not giving you a blank look, I am basically thinking to myself, we're pushing our reclamation to then another year. And there are roads in this town that can't really be pushed that far, and I'm wrestling in my head as you were talking about the money. Versus what needs to be done, and what, what has to happen with that.
The only thing is, we had talked about rec- if, if it's a candidate for reclamation, it's past the overlay, a mill and overlay. It doesn't matter whether it waits a year, or whether it waits two years or three years, it's already past that mill and overlay. It's the ones that are candidates for overlays and mill and overlays that we want to get to, so that we can preserve them for the next ten to fifteen years. Does that make sense?
I hear the rationale, I hear the rationale, I just, and again, we don't have a ton of residents screaming about any particular road.
No, I've, I've heard a little bit, I mean, I know people on North Arm One have made some comments, I bet Gary gets more comments than I do. I've heard people on the, uh, cul-de-sac at Kings Point Road, the end, they, they are kind of complaining about that. Other than that, I haven't heard much.
Not really, and just be aware too, we are keeping track now, too, of the calls that come in, uh, documenting the areas that, that. We are seeing complaints in, so that when we do come forth with this stuff, we can say, we've got, you know, X amount of people that have already talked about this, they're looking for that, so.
Plus, we also wanna look at, how much time does our public work spend on a particular road patching it? And if there's a lot of time that they're putting into one particular road, maybe that's when we put on the four, on the front burner for reclamation or reconstruct. Just one option, but.
And if I may just chime in, just going back, I pulled up stuff here from what I had on, this is from a year, a little over a year ago, but just to do Sunny Brook Drive. And Sunny Brook Lane would be roughly two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For a simple mill and overlay.
Might be able to do both, maybe.
Yeah, if you add in Sunny Brook Circle, that's gonna add in with the other stuff, all in, and probably, you know, if you're gonna fix the drain issue, the, the drainage issue there. That's gonna add in another, with the other, probably another hundred and fifty to thousand roughly, just looking at those numbers. Of course, these numbers are old, so you'd have to update it, but that's just roughly.
Okay, well, bring those back.
So one other thing, too, when we talk about reclamation, you know, with the Painters, um, project, Painters Road, with only twenty-six residents. I'd really like to see where, that's not gonna be an issue, where we can group these projects, so we have that number of residents to bring the assessments down. To that fifty percent, we have done so many roads where we've assessed fifty percent. It's really hard to go back now and say, but you're only gonna be thirty, or you're gonna be forty, I have a tough time with that. So looking at grouping, so we can get the number of residents to bring the assessments where they should be, within a reasonable amount. Cause I'm not a big fan of lowering assessments, just because there are a low number of residents.
There's always gonna be logistical issues to that as far as, you can group Oxy, you can do Shane, you can group Shady Lake, you Margaret and stuff, but. Some of these aren't real groupable, I guess.
You know, um, I'd like to see there's, those options.
Okay. So, I think that you have direction, right? And so with that, um, we'll move on, I think that concludes our business items, we'll move on to staff reports, um, Mr. Fubel.
Yeah, thank you very much, um, I have just some brief information here, um, I got some notes here that I wanna. Talk about, so, next city council meeting is on the second of May, um, we'll have a work session at five thirty, and then the meeting is at seven. Uh, we have the town hall on water conservation measures, water infrastructure, uh, that is gonna be on the third of May at six thirty PM. We do have a representative from the U of M coming, uh, to talk about turf, uh, management best practices, so they'll be present, um. Trying to just, uh, get as many, uh, you know, local experts that can talk about irrigation best practices, things like that. Really, uh, pump up the, the water conservation, um, and just hope it rains. Uh, recycle cleanup day is May fourteenth from eight AM to three PM, uh, there's information on the website. We have Trista Day coming up on May twenty-first, that's on a Saturday from eleven to two, over here at the, at the police facility. And then, um, the water tower update, so the water tower is online, I don't know if I'm, Gary's gonna give a little update, maybe I'm stealing some of his thunder. Uh, but he's got some other good news, uh, but, uh, water tower's online, fencing and grading will be completed in May, so we hope that that'll be done. Uh, final point, payment will be shortly thereafter, just as a reminder, there's a two-year warranty period on that, and, and we have five percent retained each, so. Once the warranty period's done and we go through and do the punch list, then, uh, then we'll release the fund, so, final payment, ninety-five percent of the project will be. You know, paid sometime this summer, and then in two years, the rest will come off, so, that's all I have.
Okay. Allison?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, um, included in your packet, at the very end is a memo summarizing. Um, where we've been at for miscellaneous engineering fees, um, so far this year, um, so the January amount was just over fifty-five hundred. And for February, we're, uh, just under, uh, five thousand, um, and we're anticipating about thirty-eight hundred in March. And the reason we wanna bring this to council's attention is to, to, um, include some context as to why we're seeing those higher than usual. Um, and the reason being the, you know, we usually see between four and six hundred a month for these miscellaneous items, but. Um, in this instance, um, there's been, um, direction to look at certain items, and there's a list. Um, on page hundred and thirteen of the packet, such as ordinance updates and water campaign mailer, um, that certainly took up, uh, quite a bit of time. And then there's been some technical analysis from Greg Johnson and his group, um, where time has really been of the essence to get some of those numbers pulled together. And so, um, that time spent has been put on that miscellaneous fee, because it's not, um, not included in the retainer services, um, for the engineering retainer. So, um, we've been charging it to that, we've, um, we anticipate this'll, um, be less for April, um, because we are. April's the last month with that, uh, with the mailer, um, we're getting close to finalizing that, uh, the town hall presentation. Um, so there are a lot of things that are really kinda dwindling down in that respect, but again, wanted to bring this to council's attention and. Um, have the opportunity to answer any questions or concerns that the council may have with these fees so far.
Okay, and, why would you be doing the water campaign mailer, and why is it staff doing the water campaign mailer?
Uh, that's a great question, so a lot of components of the water campaign mailer, um, if you recall, the first few had to do with. Um, the technical information with how we, how we size the system, um, so we put, we put together the technical content. We certainly have staff assisting with the, the mailer as well, um, how we've usually done it is, um, Ms. Poulphus has put together. Uh, some information and provided it to me, where I in- inject some of the technical components, and then, um, a- after that point, it's passed off to. Um, somebody, a graphic artist, to go and put it together, so there's, there's a few layers of, um, folks that work on a typical mailer. And then we've usually gone through, boy, probably two, at least two drafts of each one, once we send it to the marketing, because we give. A lot of information to him, and then he puts it on, and we have to get it down to that page and a half and, and get the graphics to look good. So we usually have a couple iterations of, of the graphic artist, um, drafted it.
Okay, I, I, again, this may just be a matter of how things are done within this city council. But I would have expected staff to do that, I would have expected you to give them the technical information and for them to actually work with the graphic artist. But, I'm just, that's just some good.
And I'm just thinking, do we, do we have that discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I provide the raw information, the title, all of the, you know, little sections that I have. I send it to Alice with the Phil and Sebelings, on gallons and that sort of thing, and then she passes it off to the graphic designer, to make it look like how it looks. Cause we don't have that capability on Microsoft Word and that sort of thing.
We do.
No, I would love to, but we do not, we have Microsoft Word and that's about it.
About it.
Yeah, and you guys approved spending this, I'm not sure up to that amount, but.
It, it wasn't much money, it wa- and it wasn't the money, it was the, it was the idea of who's doing what work. The, the rest of them, the technical analysis on down, I easily understand where that would come from, the ordinance upda- updates, I don't understand either. Yes, I am staring at you.
Oh. The sound, right? Yes, so, when we looked at the ordinance updates, we, we looked at getting some information on, um, when we got the, the definition of TOPSO, we did the, the components of, um, the, the dates for, if you recall, I'm just going off
Seeding and sodding.
Seeding and sodding, and then we, we went and looked through, um, the water reuse component and getting that, um, from Edina, from Medina and going through that component.
Okay, so, it just wasn't ordinance updates, it was, it was basically a lot of technical information that made into that.
Correct, and, and, and iterations and preparation for council and such.
Okay, all right, that's fine. I'm done.
Thank you.
All right, other questions? Did you, did you need, um, a motion for this, or, no, just kind of, it's, just for clarity and transparency?
Information, just because it was a little bit of an anomaly as far as bubbling up, that, but, I mean, the council was aware of these miscellaneous services coming forward, but I think just to quantify and show that, you know, obviously, we're, a lot of this is at the direction of council for water information and campaign and that upcoming town hall and all that.
Okay, yeah. So, yeah, and mo- most of this is coming out of the water fund then?
Yep.
Too, because it is pertaining to water, so. All right, any other questions? Um, Gary?
Yeah, I was gonna give you a tower update, but you took care of everything I had on my list for that, um, water treatment plant, um, just an update on what was happening there, the piping and the wiring for everything for the polymer pump is in, um, everything is wired up for, um, as far as the skated goes, ready to go. The pump that they have is not skated compatible, which we found out, so we had to order a new one that is on its way, unfortunately. Um, hopefully it'll be here, if it's not here today, it'll be here tomorrow, we get that hooked up. Um, we want this done, I've reiterated this to S E H. that by the end of the week, I want this thing up and running, I mean, we need to get this going. Um, then, once we get that, we're retrofitting some filter stuff right now, uh, with the help of S E H., some of the sampling ports are plugging up, so we're retrofitting some, uh, fittings in there that we're taking care of this week, uh, that'll be done. Uh, the permanganate is here, we have to do the super soak of the media to get that clean, basically, uh, so, similar to regenerate your water softener. Um, they're estimating eighteen to twenty hours of soaking time, and then it'll be backwashed several times to remove that, uh, to get that out of there. Um, and then we can add the anthracite at that point, uh, once it's flushing. Um, I've asked them, I said, we need to be in service by May first, so, hopefully they can get that going, I mean, we really need to get that done, I've really been pushing on them, uh. And then, the other thing, uh, as you may recall, the mayor asked about onsite, uh, off-road parking on forty-four, which kind of developed into, hey, how about a little parking lot? We did get approval from Hennepin County to add that. Uh, if you're interested, I do have a, again, you know, a, a, just a rough draft, if, I don't know if you guys want to take any of them? Want to pass it around, can I see what it looks like? Um, I do have a lot of questions for them on the estimate and stuff, but, coming back to the next meeting, uh, we'll have better numbers and, uh, you know, since this is a twenty-twenty-three project, we have time, but we'll kind of bring that back and see if we want to, you know, if the numbers look good, then we can, you know, if the estimated numbers and the plan looks good, uh, we can get a professional services agreement then to get, to get everything else done, so.
Good, all right.
That's all I had.
Okay. Um, any other? And I know there is a planning commission meeting, who, you're gonna be going, okay. Um, all right, then, reports, we'll start with Pam, anything?
I do not have anything.
Okay, Mr. Chumpel.
I was at the Parks Commission last Tuesday, uh, interesting, one item out of that. Uh, the commission had asked for a spreadsheet to track spending and revenues that go into the park dedication fund. Obviously, you know, that, that basically, all they've ever seen is just their small piece where they make recommendations, and then see what the council approves to go ahead with, they probably never see the actual spending that was done, and of course, they do either, out of the projects, either have parkland dedicated or they get money, but they don't ever see that, really. So, Nick and Brian got together and created a spreadsheet, which I think they really liked. Uh, they started from, they got it from two thousand fourteen through two thousand twenty-eight, so fourteen through twenty have actual numbers, and then twenty-one out through twenty-eight are like, the, the Leonard Park is projected at three hundred ninety-one thousand, et cetera, money coming in from the lots is projected like fifty thousand a year, it's not big numbers anymore. Uh, the interesting thing on this is if you project it out at the end of twenty twenty-eight, if we do all the things that have recommended to keep these parks up to code, we'll be running negative in the park dedication fund, so, it's just another thing for us to look at as we go down the line. And next, this Thursday, I'll be attending the Pioneer Center meeting, virtually. Sounds like it might be the last one virtually, because I see there's, uh, memo in there to, uh, go back to live, um, in May.
Okay. In person, you're still live.
More live.
Think of the alternative.
Touchy-feely.
Yeah, okay. Anne?
Yeah.
Nothing?
Um, I'm attending the mound fire meeting Wednesday and the lawn expansion meeting Monday.
Great. So, um, Congressman Dean Phillips holds a mayor's meeting, um, pretty much quarterly, and so, I did attend, I haven't been attending, just because of there's a lot of people in a very small room, and because of COVID, I just wasn't attending, but I did attend this one, it was good, it's kind of goo- good to get an update. Um, and, and there is some talk about taking back some of the ARPA dollars, so, that's why I was saying, I, no, just, just, just rumors at this point, but that's, he was saying, spend them, spend them, so, anyhow. Um, and I also attended the regional council of mayors meeting, that was basically on, um, race equity. And then, um, I also attended, we did a staff prep meeting to kind of go through some of the town hall, um, meeting stuff, and then we'll also be meeting this Thursday to, to finalize that, and the D N R, did you say the D N R person would be here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, we're, we're excited that somebody from the U of M and the D N R are gonna be here as well, so that's, that's really good. So, we will be talking about irrigation and lawn, um, lawn, uh, watering and all of that, and, uh, and then, um, tomorrow I have a public safety meeting with the chief and our new administrator along with Saint Bonnie, and then, uh, Gary, Allison and myself and Mr. Jasper will be attending the Saint Bonnie meeting on Wednesday evening, their council meeting, and presenting, um, more accurate information, um, to see if they are interested, so. That's all I can think of.
The presentation on the floor, will we get to see that before it comes to the meeting?
We have the, um, PowerPoint, I think, almost ready, or ready?
Very, we're waiting on the U of M, I think, might provide a slide or two.
Yes, and, um, just confirming with the D N R, the components of the slide that I'd like him to go over, and then, it's, it's, you know, miscellaneous, making it look really good. Um, and, um, filling in the agenda, but, so, it's most, I would say, like, ninety-five percent complete.
And so, when it's complete, hopefully by the end of this week, you can, if you want, would you like to see the PowerPoint then?
I'll make a note to send that out on Friday.
Yeah, and then, uh, yeah, we've been massaging it and kind of working on it, so, um, that's all I have.
I have one of the, the spreadsheet that John has from Parks.
That would be good.
Did we even hit that?
No.
It's in the Parks, um, folder, it's in the notes.
Could we get, could you just dip us off a copy of the council?
Yep.
You might want bigger print.
Please, bigger print.
Could use your magnifying glass, okay? So, but, and I also want to say thank you to Gary for, um, getting this access on forty-four, that's, that's great. Um, he knew, he has some good contacts over there, and it's always good for networking to know people, and it always helps, so, great job, thank you, Gary. All right, with that, um, I think that concludes our meeting, if there's a motion to adjourn, we can go home.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Um, McGregor made the second, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.